All right, we are live on YouTube and we are live on Zoom.
Okay, I hereby call the May 8th, 2024 meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission to order. I'll begin with a roll call, Commissioner Member Hennes, I'm here, Commissioner Member Kramer, absent, Commissioner, Commissioner Member Sandridge.
Present.
Commissioner Member Whitmore, absent, Commissioner Member Beebe.
Present.
In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to viewer participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We'll do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. One, to join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar, the link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. This time we'll proceed with meeting and we will begin with citizen comments. Do we have anyone here physically present to speak?
Could come up, state your name, Magisterial District, and you have the floor for three minutes.
I'm Lester Brainan, Buffalo Creek is where I'm at. I own the property at 3003 Colliers Town Road out in Effinger. I have rental properties in the county and I'd like to try and get the county to move forward with allowing some duplexes on agricultural land. I have people call me all the time that need a place to live. And unfortunately, there are no places that they can get that are affordable. I tend to lean towards the lower social economic scale in the county with the people that I have renting in my places. I try to fix them up, make them as nice as I can for them, but I've been, I've owned the property at 3003 for a little over about two and a half years now. I originally bought it with the intention of moving, fixing up the second floor, keeping the first floor as a rental and moving in on the second floor of it because it's very rustic. It's an old mill and Joe Clemmer used to own it. Finding out that it wasn't zoned as a duplex, kind of kaposhed that. So I went on and bought a different house and living at 1920 Collers Town Road, right there by the Deacons. So going back to my request, I'd like somehow, I've been, I've been asking for some time now to try and get this moving forward as far as getting an allowance for duplexes on the properties that are in the county. We have a real need here in this county. Gentrification has really preempted homes for people in the lower social economic scale. I would like to see you begin to do something about it. And if allowing that, allowing duplexes would be a start in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out this evening. Okay, do we have anyone online?
Physically signed up. If anyone would like to make a citizen comment or anything, not only agenda, please utilize the raise your hand button. Not seeing any. We'll turn the floor back over to the chair.
Okay, Agenda Item Three is minutes from the April 10th meeting. Did you all have an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Have a motion to approve this submitted?
A motion to approve this submitted.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye, and motion passes. Next, we are on to board reports and staff will give reports.
Yes, so at their April 8th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting, they approved some technical revisions, correction of dates, if you will, to the zoning text amendments pertaining to car washes. What it is, is administratively, to track some of these changes, administratively, we put in the date that it was adopted. There were a couple of different moving parts on getting this agenda, so there were two incorrect dates. So they just approved those technical changes. There was no material changes to the definition nor where it's permitted. That was only action taken by the Board of Supervisors since the last pertaining to planning its zoning. Since the last Board of Supervisors meeting, we did not hold a TCO meeting nor a BZA meeting. The Solar Committee met last night, May 7th, 2024. And we are, we are planning to hold one more meeting at the tail end of this month and then potentially hold the joint work session between the Planning Commission, the Solar Committee and the Board of Supervisors. I would say the earliest would be the first, the second Monday of the month, the regular work session, a regular scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting, we can have a work session. But of course, I'm all, there's a couple of different moving parts of that as far as location and timeframe, but I'll let y'all know in a timely fashion when that will be. But we're making good progress and it's essentially one more meeting. I think we can, we can close the gaps. The Solar Committee met on April 15th, 2024. And Zach with the, Zach Beard with the Central Shandell Planning District Commission joined us with that.
I was gonna say, yeah, you said solar, so I just want to make sure we're on community development.
We're back on, so we're back on community development. My apologies. Community Development Committee met on April 15th, 2024. Zach Beard with the Central Shandell Planning District Commission joined us and essentially reviewed some changes or updates to the Transportation Chapter. The original plan was for him to join us this evening. I am going to pass out when we get to the comprehensive plan discussion, I'm going to pass out the Transportation Chapter and go over some, a very high level review of the, of the changes. And Zach is planning to be with us at the next Planning Commission for, for a more detailed review. The next Community Development Committee will be May 20th, 2024.
Agenda Item Five, Virginia Electric and Power Company, DBA Dominion Energy, Virginia, 5,000 Dominion Boulevard, Third Floor, Southwest Glen Allen, Virginia, 23060. Application for a special exception permit, SEP for modifications to the timeframe of a previously approved special exception application pertaining to the storage of materials and equipment in Zone AE hatched floodway of the special flood hazard area.
All right, and attendance at minimum, we have Mr. Bob Humphreys with Dominion Power and Ms. Lane Carr with Dominion Power. Let me, let me try to promote Mr. Humphreys to a panelist as well. There are, there's another 804 number on here, Ms. Carr, if you'd need to be to.
Yes, that John Perry perhaps?
Can you hear us?
Yes, John Perry.
All right, Mr. Perry, John Perry is with us as well. Ms. Carr, can you hear us? We could barely hear you.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we might need to turn it up a little bit on our end, but we can hear you. That may be the other one. So this is, we have three public hearings associated with the same property this evening. Let me pull up, don't mind, I'll share my screen, get everyone oriented. All right. The first one, essentially it's three different, three different applications for the same project. The three different applications we are reviewing tonight is one, a special exception for this particular use in the floodway. The second one, and these are all three certified separate public hearings, but just thought it'd be beneficial to review them all at once. You know, as far as the order. First one's going to be the use in the floodway. It's the Holland property located on the east side of River Road. It consists of 69.14 acres, then also includes the total acreage, also includes these two slivers of property, if you will, as well. As far as location of the floodway associated with the project, the floodway is in yellow here. Of course, Maury River is, is the, is under River Road here. Then going, traveling to the west is going to be the flood, the flood plain, to be clear, is the yellow and the, the, the yellow hatched area and the purple, both equal the 100 year flood plain. In this particular case, we have the benefit of a engineered study. And so therefore the B, the, the base flood elevation and therefore the floodway is defined. The floodway is shown in yellow. Of course, the yellow zone, the floodway is the most restrictive overlay district as far as the flood plain we have. All three of these, so the three special exceptions, I just briefly prior to opening up each one. Is one is the use of the floodway, this, this particular use of the floodway. The second one we have is a heliport, operating a heliport on this property. And that is for the purpose of taking older material out of predominantly the national forest and then adding the new material into that location. And then the third special exception we have is the public utilities in the agricultural zone. So the first one we have is again, Virginia Electric and Power Company, DBA Dominion Energy, Virginia, has made an application for a special exception permit, modifications of the timeframe of a previously approved special exception permit pertaining to the storage of materials and equipment in Zone AE hatch. Again, it's the yellow on the map of the special flood hazard area. The properties are located on the east side, the east side of River Road, further identified as 663, approximately 1.58 miles west of the southern intersection of River Road. River Road's further identified as 663 and Glasgow Highway 501. Properties are owned by Keith W. and Penny G. Holland and are further identified as tax map numbers 108 3A, 108 3B, and 98 16-1. Again, the total is 69.14 acres. With that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen for a second. We could certainly go back to that. The properties are located in the Agricultural and General Use District, A2, and within the flood hazard overlay district, which is considered F1H. Per Section 608.11-26 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, storage of materials, equipment in Zone AE hatch floodway are used by special exception. The original special exception was approved by the Board of Supervisors on November 27th, 2023 with the following conditions. One, substantial compliance with the site plan titled Temporary Helicopter Landing Zone and Pole Assembly Area Prepared by STANTEC. That, of course, is in your package. Compliance with approved emergency management plan dated October 11th, 2023, that was also included in your package. Number three, approval contingent upon VDOT, Erosion and Sediment Control and Health Department approvals. And then the one that, the one that was originally associated with the permit was implementation of the project by October 15th, 2024 and project completion by April 15th, 2025. Essentially, due to the timeframe of bid negotiations, the timing of the final construction award, Dominion Energy has made an application for a special exception permit to modify the condition, the timeframe associated with the previously approved special exception permit. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Lane Carr with Dominion Power to review any details I may have missed and to review the application. Can you hear us, Ms. Carr?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hang up my telephone. Thank you. Very good. Thanks, everybody. Nice to see you again. Chris, you explained all of that very thoroughly and very well. So like Chris said, we are just here to expand that original condition for the six month timeframe into about a nine month window. As Chris said, after bid negotiations and awarding the contract, we decided that this nine month window will help ensure successful project completion and the most effective use of the landing zone. And if you'd like some additional details, the original six month window was project implementation by October 15th, 2024 with a wrap up date of April 15th, 2024. Our proposed, right? Five, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. 2025. Our proposed new timeframe, we've, we've split it up a little bit. So we would like to move that original date of October up to August 15th, 2024 through September 8th, 2024 to develop the landing zone, to bring in all of the timber mats and develop it so that it's ready for use. From September 9th, 2024 to April 10th, 2025, that would be the updated seven month window for actual use of the landing zone. And then from April 11th, 2025 to May 11th, 2025, so about a month on the backend, that would consist of removal of the materials and site restoration.
Okay, so instead of October 15th of 2024 to April 15th of 2025, for our purposes, it's basically just backing it up to August 15th of 2024 and ending May 11th of 2025.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Sladen?
No, not, not, not at this time.
Okay. So do we, I guess we need to open the public hearing at this time? Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
Who would have signed up?
Anybody on the computer?
Anyone online, please utilize your raise your hand button now.
Okay, with no further comments, we will close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion. It's pretty straightforward. I know you guys weren't on the board when we approved this, but I mean, all they're doing is changing a little bit of.
I have no issues.
I don't have any.
And I would like to recognize, you know, of course, you have draft motions, several different options for draft motions in front of you. Number four, number one, two, and three are obviously verbatim of the, of the original special exception permit. Number four does have the revised timeframe associated with it incorporated in the, in the dates. But also I'd just like to make note of, the Planning Commission may consider additional language on a condition. Number four, that includes the ability for the timeframe extension with the addition of the following language. And that just gives some flexibility. It states, I'll go ahead and say it's implementation of the project by August 15th, 2024 and project completion by May 11th, 25, 25 with up to a four month extension of completion date upon a written request by applicant and landowners to the zoning major, zoning administrator detailing the reasons for the extension. And so.
Then they wouldn't have to come back through planning and board and all that. That's a great idea. Sure.
Very good idea.
Very good. Okay, well, we're ready for the motion then.
Okay, I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the modifications associated with the timeframe of the previously discussed, previously approved special exception permit for the storage of materials and equipment in Zone AE hatched floodway of the special flood hazard area be approved with the following conditions. One, substantial compliance with the site plan titled Temporary Helicopter Landing Zone and Pole Assembly Area Prepared by STANTEC. Two, compliance with approved emergency management plan dated October 11th of 2023. Three, approval contingent on final VDOT erosion and sediment control and health department approvals. And four, the implementation of the project by August 15th, 2024 and project completion by May 2025 with up to a four month extension of the completion date upon a written request by the applicant and landowners to the zoning administrator detailing the reasons for the extension.
Second. And I apologize, that is the motion, I believe that was the motion for the heliport, which is coming very soon. But this particular agenda item is going to be the one for the floodway. They should be stapled in, in order.
You just read the first one.
I just did read the first one.
Was that the, I was thinking you said the heliport.
No.
Oh, that was, okay, that was.
That was the first one on the page.
Okay, okay.
I think it's just, it references the temporary helicopter landing.
Okay, my apologies.
So we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. And it's approved. We recommend to the supervisor, Board of Supervisors, the change. So item, agenda item six, Virginia Electric and Power Company, DBA Dominion Energy, Virginia, 5,000 Dominion Boulevard, Third Floor, Southwest Glen Allen, Virginia, 23060. Application for a special exception permit, SEP for modifications to the timeframe of, of a previously approved special exception application pertaining to a private heliport, application for a special exception permit to develop a private heliport.
So this is the same location as previously discussed, properties located on East Side River Road. Properties are owned by Kenny, Keith W. and Penny G. Holland, further identified as tax maps number 108-3-A, 108-3-B, and 98-1, excuse me, 16-1 totaling 69.14 acres total. This particular one, same, same project, same property, but this one pertains to the heliport. So again, the, the original special exception permit was approved on November 2020, November 27th, 2023 with the following, with the conditions that were approved as reported. The sole purpose of this one is also to extend the timeframe associated with the implementation of this project. I will note that in your draft conditions, as Ms. Carr explained prior to, there are a different timeframes. I will say the original three special exception permits were all approved with the same timeframe consistently throughout there, since we have a further breakdown of when the heliport is going to be used. What staff is essentially recommending is the original implementation date of August 15th, 2024. Then project completion of this date pertaining to the heliport of April 10th, 2025. With that, we also have some draft language in there for your consideration of the four month extension, possible four month extension. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Carr.
Thanks, Chris. Nothing really additional from me.
Right, it's pretty straightforward, I think, the whole thing. So we will now open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak on this.
There's no one physically signed up. If there's anyone online that would like to speak, please raise your hand. No one's online?
Okay.
Does up here?
Great. With no further comment, we will close the public hearing and we will bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or a motion.
Hey, okay.
All right.
Ready?
You're up.
I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the modifications associated with the timeframe of the previously approved special exception permit to develop the heliport in the agricultural and general uses A2 zoning districts per LDR Section 603.03-4 be approved with the following conditions. One, substantial compliance with the site plan titled Temporary Helicopter Landing Zone, Pole Assembly Area Prepared by STANTEC. Compliance with approved, number two, compliance with approved emergency management plan dated 10/11/23. Three, approval contingent to final VDOT Erosion Sediment Control and Health Department approvals. Number four, implementation of the project by August 15th, 2024 and project completion by April 10th, 2025. With a caveat, if that's the correct word, of extending that date four months with written approval from homeowner and homeowners and.
Applicant, landowners applicant.
Landowners and applicant. You got it. Okay, so we have a motion?
A motion.
And?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He actually made the motion, so you were the second. Yeah, we'll get it. All right, so that one is, we will recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval on that. And the seventh agenda item is Virginia Electric and Power Company, DBA Dominion Energy, Virginia, 5,000 Dominion Boulevard, Third Floor, Southwest Glen Allen, Virginia, 23060. Application for a special exception permit, SEP for modifications to the timeframe of a previously approved special exception application pertaining to the development of transmission pole staging and assembly area public utilities.
Yes, prior to get started, I failed to recognize Sarah Hackley here. We appreciate that. She is the External Affairs Representative for Dominion Power and attended this evening, so we appreciate her attendance. Again, this is the same, same property and the special exception pertains to the same project. This particular one, we've obviously gone through the, the floodway was the first one and the heliport was the second one. And the third public hearing we have is for public utilities itself. Again, properties are East Side River Road owned by Kenny, I'm sorry, Keith W. and Penny G. Holland, further identified as tax maps 108-3-A, 108-3-B, and 98-16-1. Properties located in the Agricultural and General Use Districts per Section 603.03-9 of the regulations. Public utilities are used by special exception in the A2 zone. The original special exception permit was approved by the Board of Supervisors on November 27th, 2023. The purpose of this application is to modify condition number four pertaining to the timeframe associated with implementation and completion of the project. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Carr for a brief review.
Thank you, Chris. Nothing additional.
Thank you.
Great. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment.
There's no one physically signed up to speak. If there's anyone online that like to, would like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand button now. Not seeing, I'll turn the floor back over to the chair.
We will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the modifications associated with the timeframe of the previously approved special exception permit to develop a transmission pole staging and assembly area public utilities in the agricultural and general uses A2 zoning districts per LDR Section 603.03-9 be approved with the following conditions. One, substantial compliance with the site plan titled Temporary Helicopter Landing Zone and Pole Assembly Area Prepared by STANTEC. Two, compliance with the approved emergency management plan dated October 11th, 2023. Three, approval contingent on final VDOT Erosion and Sediment Control and Health Department approvals. And four, implementation of the project by August 15th, 2024 and project completion by May 11th, 2025 with up to four, with up to a four month extension of the completion date upon written request by the applicant and landowners to the zoning administrator detailing the reasons for the extension.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And it passes and we will recommend to the board approval of this special exception and the date change. Okay, we are on to Agenda Item Number Eight. I guess people online, are we?
Yeah, absolutely. You're, you're happy to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we appreciate y'all's attendance as always. And I will be in touch as far as when the Board of Supervisors, when the, the applications will be on the Board of Supervisors agenda. As always, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. So we will move on to Agenda Item Eight, which is the Comprehensive Plan Update Discussion, which I assume is on the transportation.
Well, it's on both of them, to tell you the truth. I did very briefly talk about transportation, if you will. The purpose of this meeting was to get you, of course, as you know, the Central Shandell Planning District Commission has been working on the Transportation Chapter. With that, we, our primary contact has been Mr. Zach Beard. He's been great to work with as always. We have, in front of you this evening, you have a draft chapter, draft chapter of the transportation plan. And really the purpose of this is just to hand this out to you, let you digest this, you know, between this month and next month. The, 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 the most significant changes were the, the needs section is much more developed, originally less than one page, suggested reducing the overly technical references to the Virginia State Code requirements in the first section. Suggested moving most appendices. There are nine, now nine maps in the chapter instead of two in the first strap. Zach feels like it gives a visual depiction of some of the data that was included in, in the information. State code only requires two, two specific maps, so the county is welcome to remove any of the maps that, that, that we don't find helpful. You know, Viva and I were able to go over the plan. We had some basic comments. It wasn't a very thorough plan or review on, on my end. But we did have some basic comments. And so essentially the, the purpose of this portion of the meeting associated with the, or a comprehensive plan review is just to provide this information to you and inform you that Zach will be here the, the very next meeting, the next Planning Commission meeting. He has also requested that if y'all have any comments, suggested edits, if you can email that to staff, if Viva, I, or Deal, of course, we will get that to them by the 25th, 24. We will get that to them by the twenty fifth, twenty-four, the twenty-fourth of this month. Which is a Friday, the twenty-fourth. So, so with that, we, we really wholeheartedly appreciate the, all the work that the C S B D C has done on this transportation and will have. Formally on the agenda next month as far as the transportation chapter. With that, I would like to take some time. We, we went through those special exception modifications fairly quickly. I would like to take some time to, we have been able to have the G I S mapping updated. Pertaining to the work session that the planning commission held last month. Would like to review those changes with you, just to make sure, sure we're all on the same page on those. I will do it as briefly as possible. Starting with the larger area, the suburban service area with Lexington, if you will. We're going to zoom down on Lexington. There with me, I'm going to share my screen. And Adam, I apologize. That was not work. It's always one or the other, but that one had, was working last night. I do know that much. So can you tell the, yeah, you can sort of tell the differences and if needed, I can, I can make them more, they stand out. I try to use the same colors. The ones that you, that are transparent are the old lines associated with the suburban service area located outside of Lexington, if you will. The, the heavier dark yellow that's not transparent are, well, in, in these areas are the new. New mapping as discussed, we had some infill here along the intersection of eighty-one and sixty-four. We've also, of course, removed the interstate interchange overlay district and extended the suburban service area. To, to the sixty east interchange and beyond. One thing that I'd like to, to note is that currently, under current mapping. This, this swath of land, if you will, is approximately twelve hundred feet on both sides. We, I, I think this will be based on this conversation. This could be modified. I'm going to turn on the existing zoning. And then I'm going to attempt to make this more transparent. All right. If you notice, we did not, in, in, in the case of the, the sliver between Lexington and this interchange. You can notice the mapping does not follow the existing zoning and that's what. I just realized this when, when we were looking at it yesterday, did not have time for, for the G I S department to, to modify that. But as originally discussed, I, I think this will be neck down, if you will, to follow the existing zoning. And then I would like to focus on this area. Essentially what we did, based on the direction we, we got, we, we did not include all of the business zone. Nor all the industrial zoning district there, but rather just, you know, sort of. Made sure we're going north and south on the interstate, obviously, and incorporating the, the majority of the business zone on the. Essentially west side of the interstate in this case. And then there were some, there's some residential zoning district there, some of their existing agricultural transitional zoning district and business zone. So the modifications that, that potentially we could do is follow the existing business until you get to this point. Come up, you know, come up in this fashion, then follow back around, follow the existing business around here. And then, you know, we, we didn't really, we, we looked at this of how to make that common connection from, from this, this. Sliver on both sides around sixty back to here, but this is, this is essentially what we came up with. So if you agree with those modifications. We, we, we can modify the, the mapping accordingly.
Any problem with that?
All right. Appreciate that. Then in, well, that, those were the two, two areas that were modified in this one in Buena Vista. We have the two areas and they're even harder to see from here, but we took out some of the landfill property. We did add some property here and then, of course, we, as instructed, we went on around here and, and picked up some of this existing agricultural transitional zone. I don't think this was modified at all on that side. Glasgow. And we'll have to. Glasgow was not modified at all. And then Glasgow, the, the same with Gochin and Glasgow, I believe. So moving on to the different village areas. And I apologize, these are incorrectly, the naval rural village areas, but these were, these were our village areas and I'll start with where we're at. Of course, we, we've identified the Natural Bridge State Park land holdings here. And have done some infill just of the, the privately owned property there. So this is what the, the new revised mapping would look like here with the green being public lands now. Associated with the, with the comprehensive plan, we do have a public land layer. And then the modifications of these areas as well. Moving on to Fancy Hill, of course, this red, based on last, last month's discussion, the, the red area will move from a rural village area. To a village area. So this red will become blue essentially. And we added some property to the north side of the interstate. In fact, I think, I think we all had a consensus of this property being in there as well. To come on around here. We did, we did go down to the business zone. Incorporate the, the existing hotel and some of the business zone further down south. We will modify this one, incorporate this parcel in there. This will all go from red rural village to a village area. And then we added some property associated with the campground and, and some of the safari park, I believe. Then, as instructed, the darker red is what's going to be removed from that area. That's on the, the. East side of the interstate along Tinkerville Road, existing business zone, but we've had a lot of discussion on that. Of course, the comprehensive plan will not, will not revert any zoning, but it will give merit to future zoning applications if they do. If, if essentially if the county would like to pursue a rezoning, it, it's one merit to, to have it in the comprehensive plan, obviously. Or any, any individual landowner in the area. The next one we'll go to is the Fairfield. I'll just sort of go south, south, north, if you will. The next one, I believe, is the Fairfield area. The blue is the existing area that we talked, that, that we had currently mapped. Based on instruction last month, we have increased that area north of Sterit Road and a little bit further. South on Lee Highway. You will see a donut here, but that, that's going to be public land. The green is the school, Fairfield School property there. Moving on north, the. Existing one is here in the lighter area. And, and we will modify this, I think, I apologize, but we, we did, we did talk about going. At minimum, and refresh me here, minimum doing the mirror parcel on the other side of the interstate. But how did we, how did y'all, how did we deal, do y'all recall what we did in, in this area? Y'all recall, did we, did we, did we use the existing zoning and come on back around?
I think we did. I think we brought it on back.
I was thinking as well, and that, that may be. That may be in a different layer. There was a whole lot of different layers to, to add on to. I can see if that was done. I don't think it was done because this, this was added as well. So we'll go ahead and incorporate some of these existing zoning lines into the blue area in that case. Of course, we, we talked about creating a new village area around the Steel's Tavern there, along Route eleven. And so that is, this is, in fact, I'm going to put, I'm going to make that. And we essentially just did a, did a circle, I believe. So this, there is some existing businesses on Route eleven, on the Augusta County Rockbridge line. And then this is the, the Steel's Four banner itself. And so there's some vacant land on the, on the south side of Rafine Road we'd incorporated. Came on and back around like this and then just pretty much made a straight line, obviously, down that way.
But is the public land up above that?
That's going to be the McCormick Farm.
Okay, McCormick, okay.
And some of it's going to be, you know, it's funny because some of it's actually the McCormick Farm is broken up into a couple of different ownerships, if you will. I think V P I itself owns this. Yes, according to tax records, V P I and State University owns this. But then Virginia Tech Foundation also has significant land holdings in this area that, but that's an incorporation, Virginia Tech Foundation Incorporated. So we have to.
Public, it's.
I, I'm not sure. We'll, we'll have to tackle that when we, I, I can't remember. I, I believe we did it as public land being owned by the university. And if I recall correctly, this was like an institutional overlay zone. And so that could, that could be an institutional overlay zone, including land holdings that was Washington Lee that are located in the county. And B M I that are located in the county.
Okay.
Moving on. Fairfield, we did Brownsburg, some slight modifications at Brownsburg. The, the red is the existing area and we're adding some infill there. And then adding these two parcels there or, or two areas, I should say. I think they're parcels, but I'm not uncertain on that. Yes, the majority of that property, these would be the two, two. School properties, if you will, or, or school buildings, I should say. It's all one property. Moving south, it's just, I didn't realize we were that far south. Slight modifications to Arnold Valley area. As you know, the, the former juvenile detention center is now owned by the Panda Bakers. As you know, they've, they've got a handful of special exceptions, literally, I think it's been five special exceptions that has turned to private property. And they have a lot of great activities down there. They're with me here. And so we thought it'd be beneficial to incorporate that piece of property into the, into the red in that, in that particular area. Let's see. So we went through Fancy Hill, Rockbridge Bass, slight modifications, Rockbridge Bass, and I apologize if I'm. Going all over the place. Cars Creek stayed the same as far as Rockbridge Bass goes, some slight modifications. As discussed, we thought it'd be beneficial to go west a little bit, hug the river, come on back around here. We will add, we will add the firehouse to that as well. And then we, we shored up this area as well. So, so this, this will incorporate the firehouse, go back around here, hug the river, follow the river until Hays Creek, I believe it is, and then go back around there. We've reviewed Steel's Tavern, Rafine, Fairfield, Brownsburg, Arnold Valley, Natural Bridge, Rockbridge Bass and Fancy Hill. So those are the mapping as we have. We got a little bit more, a little bit more updates to do. Now our focus is really going to turn to the, the text of the, of the. The language associated with the land use chapter. In my opinion, it is fairly light in, in a lot of cases. You know, as discussed last time, there's, there's, I will say the majority that, but there's a lot of, a lot of discussion on the interstate overlay changes. Of course, we're, due to the fact that the interstate overlay changes are all within a suburban service area, a rural village area or village area. We're removing the, the overlay district or the overlay interstate overlay. But we will certainly incorporate some of those, some of that language into the various zones at the appropriate place, I should say. So if you, if y'all, you know, as far as homework goes, obviously the twenty-fourth for the transportation chapter, I would love it if, if y'all could. We have done some, some. Review of other comprehensive plans in the area, if you will, still digesting those, but if y'all would like copies of those, we certainly could provide those for you. But if y'all want to start looking at that language and, and essentially expanding upon some of that language, I think that'd be beneficial. In the land use chapter, in the land use chapter.
Zach worked the comprehensive plans for other counties?
Absolutely, yes.
This is not his first time.
Absolutely not. We, we've relied on the, I mean, they have done complete overhauls of, of, of the majority. And the Central Shandau Planning District is, is one of many planning districts in, in Virginia. You know, it goes up to Highland, Aligate, or excuse me, Augusta, Bath, Highland. And then Rockbridge. I think that's all the counties associated with it, independent cities, independent towns. So within that realm, absolutely. Zach has done a lot of work. The C S B D C and, and along with Zach or vice versa, has done a lot of work with this stuff.
Be good with that. Then we are on to agenda item nine, zoning text amendment discussion.
Yeah. So I apologize. This was a weird month with the timing of the. This was unusual month on the timing of the newspaper publication that I called gentlemen this afternoon. That essentially, as you know, the Park Creek area is propelling the zoning text amendment associated with restaurants in conjunction with. Country stores. With that being said, I failed, I failed to get that in the newspaper, so we were unable to hold that public hearing. I, I told the, I told the gentleman, I tattooed it on my forearm and, and made a couple of calendar reminders. So I won't have to make that same phone call again and say, hey, I failed to, to advertise. With that being said, that one was obviously cut and dry. We're just adding that language. We will hold a public hearing next month to add that language to, to the country store aspect of it. As you know, country stores are permitted, are used by special exception in the, in the agricultural and general use district among, amongst others, I believe. So what you have in front of you is essentially a very rough draft and apologize, found myself doing that a lot. But we did, I, I, I worked on this this afternoon. The purpose of this is we're, we're talking towards, we're, we're going towards. Separating out mobile food restaurants and restaurants. As you know, it, it, it's problematic the way we deal, in my opinion, it could be, could be problematic the way we deal with mobile restaurants or AKA food trucks. And I do, the more I explored various ordinances and really deal with it on a, you know, a, a monthly basis, if you will. I think they are two different, two different uses and should have. We have a lot of provisions for restaurants as far as parking goes, landscaping requirements, in some cases corridor review, et cetera. But not the same requirements for mobile restaurants. So what you have in front of you is essentially a modification of what we, what we reviewed last month. King William County, I believe it was, it might have been King George, I can't remember, but we reviewed it last time. And essentially very hastily, I modified this for Rockbridge County. And so this is another homework assignment. This is a very rough draft, if you will, but wanted to get this in front of you to keep that discussion going as well.
I do have one question. I'm noticing number three, no items shall be sold other than food and beverages. I know I've seen like some of these little, little things. They'll have like their own t-shirts, you know, some taco thing or, you know, hats and things like that. I mean, is there a reason? And what else would they be selling? I don't know what you're.
Well, I think, I think we, that, that's an excellent point. I, I think we could, we could say. Or, or merchandise associated with the, with the food truck itself. If they want to sell little hats, t-shirts, stickers. In conjunction with it, I think that's appropriate. I think what we're trying to get away from in this particular one. Is we, we've had recently a mobile, you really name it. I mean, the mobiles have become a lot, mobile retail stores and mobile. Just about everything. I've had a lot of different discussions with people. Do you allow this? Do you allow that? And, and we currently don't have any provisions essentially for anything mobile. We have in the past treated mobile restaurants as a restaurant, but that has been.
Mobile restaurants can be different than, I mean, I guess what I would call those is a pop-up store. Like, I mean, do we have any regulations about that? Pop-up stores and things?
No, but I'm not sure. I'd have to answer that. I have to do some research and answer that. We haven't seen it for quite some time. There was a, there was a. Short stint in Rockbridge where you see the mattress sales and the rug sales and everything else, but. That was essentially out of a U-Haul parked on the side of the road. So we have not seen that in quite some time. Not saying it's not going to come back tomorrow. But that's something we certainly could, could either straight prohibit through zoning or, or certainly have regulations pertaining to.
Did you find out if the truck that's parked over.
Auto zone.
Auto zone is running, not run, like, I mean, like I said, I haven't seen. It's, yeah.
I have not had any follow-up on that.
I thought it was out further at one time and they put it back in the spot.
Tires are flat and it's, I mean, I just wonder, is it, you know, do we have regulations that say it has to have a current sticker on it and be in running condition and actually move?
Supposed to leave every night.
Yeah, yeah, that is. And I think that's, that's fairly important, in my opinion. With that being said, currently, in my opinion, an operable motor vehicle ordinance could certainly take care of that particular. Food truck, you know, I, I have, I'm uncertain if it has a, I don't think it has a current inspection. With that being said, I could.
That brings up a good point too. I mean, is there any reason that it needs to move? You know, like if Mr. Gee's whatever wants to stay in front of a place and the business doesn't care, like. I mean, if the landowner or the person says it's fine with us, like we don't care if he stays here. I mean, should we say you can't do that? I mean, is there?
I think it does have an impact on the, the corridor, if you will. I think. I think, and I think to fully vet that or fully answer that, I think the TCO would be involved at this discussion as well, the tourism corridor overlay. And we have had, in the past, we have had provisions where it was set up and then removed. But but obviously, that that has not happened with with some of the other ones. And I think it does have an impact on the character of the corridor or could have an impact on the character or character of the corridor.
Right, absolutely, that they're all the time.
I just think if there was five of those trucks on.
Sure. And that that may answer the question, you know, is there any concern of these things staying there? You know, it's opportunity, obviously, but but overnight type.
That makes a good point. You know, if if Mr. Gee's stays in front of this place and they stay in front of that place and people down here say, you know, then you've got just a row of them. Sitting in parking lots all the way down.
It's really not common. I mean, of course, going back to Mr. Gee's, I've never seen him even stay overnight type thing, you know. So the majority, the vast majority of them are.
Another grandma's donuts or whatever that comes over, you know, storage, you know, but it's like on Thursdays, donuts are here, you know, but that's it, you know.
Yeah.
It's not there all the time.
So it's something to consider, you know, something considering the regulations as far as, do we want, you know, do we want them to be mobile? And well, they're definitely mobile in nature, don't get me wrong, per the draft definition. With that being said, you know, what impact does that have? You know, should we include the 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 vehicle, number six draft, the vehicle and all accessory structures shall be removed by the end of the day?
Well, and I guess the other question is, you know, do we care where they put it? You know, if somebody wants to put it in the middle of the Walmart parking lot and Walmart says it's okay, are we okay with that? Or if they want to put it on private, you know, ag land or what, you know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, do we have where this is where they're allowed?
Yeah, you you could, so currently, we we operate it as it could go in the existing business zone with landowner's permission, obviously, or, and this is, this is incorporated, the best I could do this afternoon. You know, different special events, you know, temporary special events that this would be considered accessory used to, but then also it's very common for for limited breweries to have these farm breweries. It's called limited breweries in state law. It's it's also common to have them under farm wineries have them a lot. Been getting inquiries on farmers markets, so I don't think it's, you know, in other regulations pertaining to farmers markets, that type of thing. So there there are certainly regulations, current regulations per policy, if you will, which could be problematic, that that we do our best to inform the the food truck owner, mobile restaurants, I should say.
They have food trucks on, what was it, Fairfield when they do the farmer's market? Usually it's a different one, but they've removed it.
I agree. Okay. Anything else?
Not on this one. This one, just this one, again, is a very rough draft, want to get it in front of you, just keep that conversation going. Next month, we'll put it on there. Staff will have some some time to, you know, work on some of these items that we talked about. And then it will definitely be discussion next month as well pertaining to food trucks, but we'll have a formal public hearing associated with the general store or restaurant.
I just want to go back because I want to make sure I get it on my calendar. May twenty fourth, is there a time for that?
By the end of the day, but just essentially by the end of the day. That that's the May twenty fourth is when Zach wants the comments back, but any time between now and May twenty fourth.
Meeting that day.
No, no, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay. Comments on the transportation are due back by end of the day on May twenty fourth. Okay. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right, we appreciate it.